Good to go, good afternoon everyone. Welcome back, Happy New Year. Good health to all of us because January is picking us all off like flies apparently. I call to order this special meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. The date is Thursday, January 11th, 2018. The time is 3:02. And we will start with a roll call noting that Board Member Kravitz is joining us telephonically. Correct, Ms. Kravitz?
Sandy.
Sandy, are you here?
Oh, sorry, yes, sorry, I was just muting my computer. Yes, I'm here, Sandy Kravitz.
Thank you, and then continuing from my far right.
Allison Beckham.
Kim Hartman.
Pam Kirby.
Barbara Pearlberg. All Board Members are present and we do have a quorum that will note that Dr. Nance is sitting in for Dr. Bergwelt who is out due to illness, like many others. We all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we will get started with our first action item, 3A, reorganization of Governing Board. We'll start with statements regarding the Office of President first. I would take the liberty of starting us off with a statement. No secret, this year has been an incredible challenge, tremendous learning curve, and far from smooth sailing, but there have also been tremendous accomplishments by this leadership team that we are all a part of. And I remain passionately dedicated to the vision and direction that this board has defined for our district. It would be a privilege to continue serving as President as we keep moving forward, keep getting better and getting stronger as we all serve the students of SUSD. Do we have any other additional statements if our members would like to make? Ms. Kravitz, no?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This is my real negative side in the sense that I didn't, I was so new last year. So can you, is it only self-nomination or can you nominate someone?
You can certainly nominate someone. Make a motion to nominate someone else or yourself, and then we see if there is a second, and we take a vote.
Okay, so if you, when you ask for statements, if somebody doesn't put forward, that means they are not self-nominating themselves.
That's correct, yes. It's just an opportunity for everyone to make a statement before a motion is made. So rather than someone just kind of jumping right out there, it gives everyone opportunity to speak. Alright.
So I would like to make-
Board Member Beckham. Yes.
I would like to make a motion, and it is not an acknowledgement of the candidate at hand, Board President Pearlberg, because I think you've done an outstanding job. And I think that we've had a very open and effective relationship. But when thinking about the presidency, I would like to, if they didn't self-nominate, I was going to see if they would be interested in the position only because of the philosophy of allowing as many people as possible to be in the position of President. And I feel that having different people in that position opens up the board for growth and learning that otherwise just wouldn't happen. So it hasn't, it's not a vote against any of the candidates because I feel that every Board Member would be capable if they were willing to serve. But I would like to nominate Kim Hartman because I recognize this is her last, possibly, I don't know if she's running again or not, but the last of her existing term right now. And I think that I would like to see if she would like that opportunity, and then obviously would be voted on by the members. So I'd like to.
Thank you. Great. Well, thank you, Board Member Beckham. Appreciate the vote of confidence, although I'm hearing you share, I mean, a shared vote of confidence with everybody. So, yeah, I think this is a wonderful group of Board Members. You know, I really appreciate it, and there was, I'll tell you what, I would be happy to play that role. At the same time, I think some continuity and just momentum going forward is terrific, which I'm happy to support. It also takes, I think, a significant amount of time, additional time, to do that specific role. And so for that reason, I am more than comfortable and confident in Board President Pearlberg in that role. I might like to nominate or be nominated for Vice President to support us in that role, but-
That will be next.
So I would, with gratitude though, probably decline at this time, but thank you. Appreciate it. Any other statements?
I too appreciate your comments. I think we have an incredibly strong board, and it is the thought of the significant time that it does take in this role, especially as we work so hard in this district right now to move us forward. So I respectfully agree with that, and I think we could all be strong in this role as well, because I think we all understand the direction we're headed, which is terrific. Any other comments?
Well, then I will make a motion, I will make official motion to nominate myself as President, which is very awkward, but do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you all. I will continue to work very hard for this board, which I am proud to serve on. We now move on to Vice President in this office. Board Member Kirby.
Thank you, President Pearlberg. As that's official again for another year. As the current Vice President, I would like to first thank the board for your diligent participation, participation throughout this year, particularly early on in the year when we had the training, the board training and the leadership training. I think that was a defining moment for this board in getting us to where we are today. In that regard, it has been an honor to be your Vice President, but somewhat to Board Member Beckham's comments, I would like to nominate Board Member Hartman. And I hope this isn't her last year on the board. I fully support her candidacy going forward. What if she chooses, if she chose to put her name in that hat? But I'd like to nominate her for Vice President and happy to share any stopwatch skills that I can share with her. And the red, yellow, green signs.
Wonderful, wonderful. Do we have any additional statements? Board Member Hartman.
Board Member Kirby, thank you very much. Appreciate your nomination, and I would accept that role and look forward to continuing the journey that we started because, you know, sometimes change in what we want to accomplish is challenging and requires some courageous leadership, and I think all of us together, locked arms, we're going to get great things done in 2018. So I would be honored to serve and support in that role.
So can I consider that a motion, Board Member Hartman? Or would Board Member Kirby like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to nominate, or I'll move that we approve Board Member, or select Board Member Hartman as Vice President for this next year.
Board Member Kirby, I would love to second that motion and look forward to working with you as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Alright, now that awkward agenda item is done. Alright, next action item, 3B, approve the designation of sole source for Avant Assessment.
Let me speak to that. This was an item that was originally on a consent agenda a long time ago, I'm not sure, December I believe, and then was pulled, I believe, because there was not enough information included. The reason that, let me go back to why we were asking that Avant be selected as a sole source. The state of Arizona allows school districts to offer a seal of biliteracy to graduating seniors, and that means they have shown proficiency in a second language, whatever that language may be. I can't tell you right now what that seal means, whether universities are using that seal for any kind of placement or anything like that, but it's a nice recognition that students can receive to show that they have accomplished proficiency in a language. The state allows two different companies to offer that test, and you can choose between either of those two companies. So as we investigated the opportunities that were out there, one of the things we noticed is that one of the companies does not offer all of the languages as an assessment that we offer here in the district. And so initially, that was the case, and we had to choose the one that had all of our languages. Since that time, we became aware that the second company was working on having some additional languages, but we have checked as recently as yesterday, and it is not ready, and the information we got was that certainly not even before March will they have all of those assessments available. The other piece of information that you need to know is that when we looked at cost, the selected company, the one we're asking you to designate as a sole source, is less expensive than the other one anyway when it comes to purchasing these assessments. We have a large number of students that we need to assess, and right now it would be students who are in their third, fourth, or fifth year of a language. So they're either in Spanish 3, 4, or 5, Mandarin 3, 4, or 5, whatever language that may be. And we will also be looking to use this test or parts of this test with our dual-language immersion students at Pueblo and Mojave, because we certainly want to see how they're doing with language proficiency. Without some guide to compare us to other places who are using this assessment, we don't have, we can guess, but we don't have any idea. And so this is something we need to get started on right away, which is why we initially had it on the agenda in December, wanting to start right away Monday, or Tuesday, Monday of this week. And so we are asking you to name Avant as a sole source, and what that means is we can go ahead and purchase it, they can flip the switch, whatever they do, and because it's web-based, it would be immediately available for us to use. So that's kind of the background with this. I'm here, I've got Mrs. Redner and Julie Vasquez, our World Language Coach, is here. If you have any questions that I can't answer.
Questions, Board Member Hartman.
Just one question. It makes sense, the logic on why we're sole sourcing it. What I just wanted to clarify is, are we approving anything less than the $275,000? I read it in here somewhere.
275 was a different item.
Oh, it's different? What, so what, are we approving the amount on this one right now?
The amount's about $27,000.
Oh, that's, okay. So we are, okay.
Well, you're approving it to be a sole source-
Okay.
-to allow us to do the purchase order and make that happen.
Okay.
And I can just add that as part of determining that it's appropriate for a sole source, we've included the Arizona Administrative Code, five points, that does include determining that, what the price is. So that information is part of what you're up per.
Okay, and that is, that number three was exactly what I was referring to, was the duration and estimated total value. So do you need to tell us the estimated value and total, duration, total value?
Well, the $27 allows us to buy enough assessments to do the assessing this spring for all of those students.
Oh, okay, so it's $27,000 for this spring?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I don't know, maybe I could ask Julie and Cheryl to come up to the microphone for a second and just tell us basically the number of students we're looking at and what the cost of those assessments would be. You know Mrs. Redner, Julie Vasquez, our World Language Coach, which, who's really our expert with second language acquisition here in the district.
So, President Pearlberg, Governor of the Board.
Dr. Nance. So we have, we would like to purchase tests for 1,500 students for the test, to take the test. So we're able to test those levels three, four, and five students to catch them, the four and five students who haven't had the test yet because we haven't implemented it yet, and then grab some of those DLI students again to measure proficiency rates with them.
Thank you. Board Member Beckham?
So just to clarify, so the, it is a one-time fee of $27,000, and we will have an online availability for just the spring to capture those approximate, I think I asked you about 2,200 students.
It's not 2,200, that was the initial information. How many students are we talking, how many tests are we buying?
1,500.
We're buying 1,500 tests.
And it's a per-licensed test, so we'll use-
It's so much per test.
So we'll use what we need to use, and then again, test those DLI, dual-language students as well. And then next year, we'll only have to, we should be able to, we'll be able to test those Level 3 students because we have caught those Level 4 and 5 students to be able to have them earn that seal as well. So there will be an annual cost because we want to continue with the Seal of Biliteracy extension.
And if I might add to that too, it's not just the Seal of Biliteracy. We want to know how our students are doing with language proficiency. We may at some point want to assess our Level 1 students. Now, we're not talking about that right now, but that might be something we eventually want to do, and look at how all of our students, whether they're at Level 1, or 3, or 5, or a 4th grader at Pueblo, how are you doing in becoming proficient in that language?
Board Member Kirby? Did you have follow-on?
I had a follow-up question. I was just following up with, because of the state statute for the procurement code, we are required to do 1 through 5. So we now have the duration, the estimated cost value. Number 4 says the documentation, that the price submitted is fair and reasonable. So do we have the documentation?
We only have one company.
Okay, so-
It is what it is.
And so what are we using as that documentation? I'll refer to Michelle Marshall. Is that an invoice? Is, what are we using for that so that we make sure that we have met our procurement code requirements?
So first of all, to Dr. Nance's point, the description in the agenda item is fairly detailed in terms of the efforts to locate the company and that there was only one company that meets the needs of the district. So he's right in that there's only one company, so they do kind of have a monopoly. I would just ask, does this appear to be reasonable in terms of, based on your expertise in curriculum and assessment, to be a reasonable and fair price for such a service?
I think so, and they were willing, there's price breaks as you buy more and more, and they're willing to work with us to do that. I mean, this was the best possible price we could garner from them, so yes.
This is a very comprehensive assessment. Julie, could you just speak for a minute or two about what a student actually goes through when they take this, the complete assessment?
Sure. The stamp assessment is adaptive testing, so students are tested in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And as they answer questions, in listening for example, the test is tracking correct answers and keeping them at that proficiency level until they meet the number and then moving them up. So it moves up and down. And then it uses that as a baseline when they move on to writing and when they move on to speaking to determine the prompts that are given to the students to then speak and write about. So it's all targeted to that proficiency level, making sure that students don't feel that they're giving a prompt that's beyond their ability based on their receptive skills, so that reading and listening.
Any other thoughts? Board Member Kirby?
Okay, so to continue on Board Member Beckham's line of questioning, I just did a simple math of 27,000 divided by 1,500 students, and came up with $18 a test, which-
That's about right.
-when you think of standardized testing in other areas that schools use frequently, that seems very reasonable to me. I just wanted to ask, for Pueblo, what have we thought through yet? Are we ready to answer? Because I know their families are going to be very excited. They've been looking for something like this for some time, and I remember, I mean, even when I, my child was at Pueblo 10 years ago, we were talking about having this. Do we have any idea what grade levels at Pueblo?
Well, I'm gonna let Julie answer this, but we have been using it at Pueblo. The problem is they haven't done anything with it.
Well, there you go.
And so I, Julie, do you want to add to that? What have we done at Pueblo so far, Pueblo and Mojave, and what would be the plan moving forward?
Sure. We've been using the stamp in levels in grades 3, 4, 5, 6, and then a sprinkling in 7 and 8. So we've got exit data in 8th grade when our students finish. But we test two skills in 3rd grade, the alternating two skills in 4th grade, and then all skills in 5th grade. So we have cohort data to track. Eventually, students have all skills. This year, we'll be adding 2nd grade. They just approved stamp for going down that low. There's been a learning curve with kids in technology and computer testing and reading and things like that, so we'll probably start with the receptive skills. The listening, as opposed to having students write, we'll look at the technology for speaking, but we want to target two areas as low as 2nd grade this year to start gathering that data early, aligned with the proficiency targets that we've now set at Pueblo at grade level, and really hold students, families, teachers, the program accountable for making sure that we're making those strides that we need to be making.
That's great. So along those lines then, would it be, would it be appropriate for us to, at a future board meeting, to look for Pueblo, maybe at last year's, since they've been doing the test, last year's stamp test, and then annually start looking at the growth we're making? And just kind of, you know, how we always have towards the, usually at the beginning of the year, we have last year's AZ Merit, and we review those growth numbers. Would it be appropriate to just add in whenever the timing's right, when it makes sense, so we can, we can start to talk about?
In addition to that, we will have some data, once we've gone through the levels 3, 4, and 5, we can report back to you as well in terms of how many of those students actually demonstrate the proficiency needed to actually have a seal of biliteracy.
And also, if I could jump in, Julie and her team have been working with those teachers for the last couple of weeks with the data from last year, along with the curriculum to work to align to that correct level. So they have started that process with Julie having been part of it.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Sandy? Board Member Kravitz? Did you have any questions?
No, I'm good, I'm just listening in.
Okay. Alright, then I'll throw out mine, and mostly for clarity, I mean, one, it definitely sounds like we need this assessment tool, quicker the better, understand the sole procurement. I guess one of the questions I have, just thinking ahead, is when this approval of this kind of sole source kind of ends and we take another look, or who takes another look? Is it, is it established at this point that a next purchase order, you take another look and reevaluate whether there is sole source? I'm not sure if, how that's defined in the process, just for clarity, is it?
Given that this has an end date, if we're looking to do a new procurement, we would have to look again, yes.
Okay, so that's, there is that in date. Board Member Kirby?
Alright, but it's a good question, because to that point, would the baseline all change then with a new vendor?
Yes. And certainly, that's a consideration.
Right, that would make sense.
At that point in time, if another vendor comes out with the test that we need today, in a year's time, when we go to renew, we would look at that, but we also have a history with this company, and so you would evaluate that as part of the evaluation. Is it worth changing? Does it change the baseline?
Right.
And compare the cost.
Makes sense. Alrighty then, we have no further questions or comments?
You're ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion?
So I moved President to the Arizona Administrative Code, R7-2-1053, and the information presented that we approve sole source procurement of Avant Assessment.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby. Do we have a second?
Full second.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Excellent, thank you all.
Yeah.
Or should I say gracias? I was about as good as I get, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Board Member Hartman seconded. Alright, we move on to action item 3C, approval of the procurement of the Palo Alto Network Security Data Software/Hardware. And Dr. Nance, who's starting that conversation for us?
We have Debbie Spalding, who's gonna talk a little bit about this, because she can explain it way better than Coach Tavis. I believe she has a presentation for you here too.
Good afternoon, President Pearlberg, members of the Governing Board, and Dr. Nance and Sandra. Thank you for asking me to speak about our, hopefully our new firewall that we would like to put in production. This product is called the Next Generation Firewall, because a firewall is an important part of any enterprise-level network, and this is a firewall plus, and so I'm gonna explain the plus. So in our district currently, we have what we consider bottlenecks. And a bottleneck means that coming in from our schools, we have bandwidth available for 10 gigabits per second, and that's a lot of traffic. But we have pieces on our network, pieces of equipment, that only allow 1 gigabit per second to go through them, and then we have 2 gigabits per second to go out to the internet through our internet service provider. So what we've done is we've taken our 10, and we have this bottleneck that shoots it down to only 1 gigabit per second throughput in our network, and so what we're gonna try to do is get rid of that. So, and then also, like I said, this is a next-generation firewall, so this will improve the functionality and our ability to keep our network and our students safe and secure. We're also going to be replacing multiple systems with this, and I'll talk about that in a second. Some benefits about, of the Palo Alto Next Generation Firewall is that it removes that bottleneck that I talked about. It also plans for increases in our network traffic. So right now, I said we have the ability for 2 gigabits per second, which we will accomplish with this, but it's also scalable as we need more bandwidth, up to 10 gigabits per second with the current exact specifications. And then we could change out some network cards to bring it up to 20 if we needed to over the lifespan of this equipment. So it's a really good plan for growth. We also have increased security features so that we can pinpoint problems on the network more quickly. It has a great management console so we can see what's going on, and we can also basically prevent traffic coming in or out of our network that we don't want to go in or out. It also replaces multiple systems. We can safely enable applications very specifically, like we could let certain amounts of one kind of traffic in but not other pieces of it, and we could allow only certain types of people, certain positions to have that access, and not all. And then of course, I said the advanced visibility of the traffic so we can watch what's coming in and out. The functionality, this is a firewall, and a firewall controls what goes in and out of your network. It's web filtering, which controls what websites we can go to, which we already do, but this replaces our existing system. It has malware sandboxing. Everyone's heard of malware, I'm sure, at your home computers. This actually will sandbox it and keep it off of our network. And it also has intrusion prevention so that people can't come on our network and do malicious things. And these are all actually separate systems that we have running in the district now, and this is all gonna be on one system now. The pricing of this solution is $203,204 plus tax, and it includes redundant power supplies, the capacity for 10 gigabits per second of inspected traffic, 3 years of licensing and support. So it really encompasses a lot of functionality and equipment for this, and it is definitely where we need to go on our network.
Any questions? Any questions? Board Member Beckham?
I was just gonna say, thank you so much, that was very thorough. One thing you had noted on here, which I think is worth noting too, is that that it was, that this price was already included in the budget, so you're not asking for additional funds outside of the budget.
Correct.
So thank you.
Board Member Kirby?
And you may not know the answer to this question, if, I should have asked it earlier, so I don't, no worries.
I hope I do.
So you said we're replacing other systems?
Mm-hmm.
Are we saving on those other systems? Are we saving any money?
Well, so like I said, this whole solution with the equipment and the licensing is $203,000, and I did an assessment on what it would cost for us to pay our existing maintenance fees, that's assuming that they don't go up over 3 years. So for 3 years of maintenance for the systems we're gonna replace, that would have cost us $100,000. cost us $171,300. And then if we were to replace that equipment, that would be another $153,600.
Great. You knew the answer. Appreciate it. Thank you. Terrific. Board Member Kravitz? Oh, sorry, it was Board Member Hartman first.
So I just wanted to carry on that line of thought. So is that, does that replace those two sums together, so it's actually a net savings?
If we were to replace all those systems, it would be a net savings, yes.
Are we?
Well, we're not going to replace, we're going to replace them with this, so we won't be buying those systems ever again.
Right.
So, yes, in a way, it's a net savings.
Okay, so there's a net savings roughly. I didn't do the exact math, but it was like $100,000 actually. Okay. Okay, and then one other question. So I just was wondering, this includes the support services?
Yes.
So do we completely outsource network support, or does this complement internal support? And if so, is there additional training that's required?
Well, so with the maintenance and support, the maintenance is to have the licensing available to us. And then the support is if we have an issue that we can't resolve ourselves, we have people that we can call for assistance. It is typical on any type of equipment, just like a Cisco SmartNet.
I was just wondering if there's additional training or certification that's required with this firewall product?
There is.
And if so, you know, additional cost.
So separately, we have the services scoped for this to help us implement it, because this is a very specialized skill, as I can tell you figured out. And so people will help us implement it, and then there's two days of training for our staff, so we can do the day-to-day maintenance. But if there was a catastrophic issue, we have a support contract to fall back on.
To back it up. Okay. Thank you.
Comments? Board Member Kravitz? Did you have any questions?
Well, yeah, I'll ask a quick question. Well, transferring over to this system, would you do it during a school break? Do you anticipate any accessibility to our district website when this gets implemented?
Great question. We've had a slight delay on this, so our timeline is not solid until we get our PO in place. But our plan would be to either cut over to the system, at least the first cut over, on a night or a weekend, or possibly spring break. But we definitely would not do it during hours, because it would take down all access to resources. But we'll probably do a phased approach, so that we don't have a catastrophic outage.
Board Member Hartman?
And just one last question.
Thank you.
One last question. So on the operational side, I'm just wondering about this, because there's, you know, a lot in the paper in terms of, on the intrusion side of it, and phishing and all those kinds of things. So just wondering how we feel we are now for those external kind of attacks on the system, and how this might change that scenario.
So with a traditional firewall, there's certain amounts of information you can see on things that are happening on your network, but it's very limited. You can do some traffic studies, and you can see what types of packets are flowing back and forth, but you can't see where your traffic came from very easily without hours and hours of research. This actually has an administration page that will show where all your traffic is, what applications are using that traffic. So this is going to put us light years ahead of where we are now on what we can monitor and track in the safety of our network. I don't want to divulge too much information, but this will definitely improve where we are. And I'd be happy to have a one-on-one conversation with you.
Great. That's directionally what I was hoping to hear, so I'm sorry. Thanks.
All right. And there's no other questions? Ready for a motion?
So I move that we approve the procurement of the Palo Alto Network Security Data Software/Hardware purchased through CDW-G on the TCPN Cooperative Contract, contract number R 160201.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby. Do I have a second?
I'll second that very thorough motion.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We all love talking tech stuff. Okay. We'll move on to information discussion, item 4A, Annual Open Meeting Law Training. This is Ms. Marshall. We are again.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and guests. Here we are again in January for our annual open meeting law training. I love doing this every year, and I love being the last person on the agenda. At least it's still daylight out. So I always like to remind our audience why we do this every year. First of all, it's just a good idea, a refresher, a reminder for us all that we are following the spirit and letter of the law in terms of government in the sunshine. We want our public to understand what we are doing, and so we have open meetings. In addition, we have a fairly old consent decree from 1998, before all of our time, in which the board at that time had some allegations against it, violations of open meeting law, in particular with respect to executive sessions. And as a part of that consent decree, the district agreed to do annual open meeting law training. So what does the law say? Meetings shall be open. Meetings are open to the public. The public is allowed to attend, and any legal action that you take has to happen in public, as opposed to behind closed doors. So what is legal action? It's any collective decision, commitment, or promise made by you. And I want to point out in that second bullet point, it really is not just the ultimate action, but it's discussion, deliberation, consideration, all those things that would lead up to a final decision, as well as the actual final decision, needs to happen in public. Again, I talked a little bit about the spirit of the law. It's the public policy that the public should know what we are doing, and so whenever there's a close question, we err in favor of having the open meeting. Who is covered? I'd like to remind you that it's not just this board, but any advisory committee that would be, that is appointed by this board. So if the board voted to have an advisory committee go out and make, find out information and come back to you to make recommendations, then that advisory committee would also be subject to the open meeting law and need to post notices and invite the public. There are some committees that are not board advisory committees, and sometimes we've had people ask questions about those. So for instance, if the superintendent decides that she would like to have an advisory committee, and she's making that decision, as opposed to you guys making that decision as a board, then she can do that without having to follow those rules. That's specific to anything appointed by you. Some exceptions to the open meeting law. We've had some questions in the past about attendance of a majority of you or a quorum of the board at social events, or seminars, or training. It is not a violation for three or more of you, which would be a quorum, to attend such an event, as long as you don't discuss official public business. Examples of those events I put in here, graduations, dinners, awards ceremonies, seminars, training. These are some things that you go out into the community to do, and it's perfectly okay for you to do that. I also wanted to put in, this slide is from the Arizona Ombudsman's Office that deals with open meeting law complaints under the Attorney General's Office. They also have training that talks about the exception for social events and seminars. And in the bullet points in this slide, they recommend that we do what we do whenever there's a social event, which is post a courtesy notice to let the public know, hey, three or more of the members are likely to be at this event, no legal action's gonna take place, but they will be there. Just, again, to make sure that the public understands that we're not trying to do something at a social event that we should be doing in a public meeting. Another major exception is for student matters. When we have disciplinary action of a student that needs to come before the board, that doesn't have to happen in public for obvious reasons. The privacy of the student is of utmost concern. So the law permits us to not have a public meeting when you need to discuss those sensitive In terms of the notice that we're required to post, it has to be posted at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. We can count Saturdays. We cannot count Sundays or holidays. We can count Saturdays, because we also have the information on our website. The notice needs to be specific enough to tell the public what it is you're going to be discussing or possibly taking action on. I have received questions in the past about whether we have been specific enough on particular items. And the information I put under that bullet point comes from the Attorney General's Office, the favorite legal answer of it depends. The degree of specificity, the Attorney General says, depends on the circumstances. And then they give an example in their handbook of one that would be, that would allow you to have a discussion, but couldn't possibly give all the options you might discuss. So that example that the Attorney General gives says, "Discussion and possible action regarding budget priorities and revisions for upcoming fiscal year." A notice like that would allow the board to generate and discuss different options without having to figure out what all those options might be that you might come up with as a group in a discussion. So generally, it would be a violation for the board to have a discussion of anything that's not specifically noticed on the agenda. And I'll talk more about that in a second. Our notices need, our meetings need to be accessible to those with disabilities, and ours are. We also post information on all of our agendas. If somebody needs accommodations, to please contact us, Sondra in particular, so that we can make arrangements if we need to. Executive sessions are another major area of exceptions that are allowed for us to have, for you to have meetings behind closed doors for certain specific items set forth in statute. For executive sessions, only those who need to be there can be in the executive sessions. And we have to state exactly what it is, which provision of the law that you're meeting under. We can't just say, it's an executive session, see the general statute. And I'll talk a little bit about the specific items that you are permitted to meet on in executive session. If you're discussing an employment matter about a particular employee, if you are discussing confidential records, for instance, executive session notes or minutes, if you want to have legal advice with me or other attorneys for the board and the district, you can have that in executive session. You can give your attorney's direction on litigation or possible settlement discussions. You can go behind closed doors to talk about meet and confer with employee groups. And then you can also be in executive sessions for negotiating the purchase, sale, or lease of real property. Public comment. The law says that the public has the right to listen and attend. It does not say that they have the right to speak. If you choose, which we do, to allow public comment, you may impose a time limit, and we do, ours is three minutes. You can limit time, place, and manner, but not content of what people say in public Sometimes people will come to the podium for public comment and talk about something that's not on your agenda. As you know, generally, you can't have a discussion about it right then and there if it's not on your agenda. You do have the ability to respond to criticism, or ask staff to review a matter that's brought to you at public comment that's not on the agenda. But other than that, you're generally limited. You can't have a full, robust discussion unless you put it on a future agenda. Sorry, you can also ask to have it put on the future agenda. A quick reminder about electronic communications. Emails are a quick and easy way to communicate, but they're also one of the pitfalls in terms of the open meeting law. You know, a reply all can wind up being a violation if it's sharing how you might vote on a particular matter that's gonna come before the board, or forwarding messages, trying to share information innocently might get you in a sticky situation. So just be aware that that can happen, and that best practice is to just reply individually or talk to one member, but not a quorum of members about that item. What happens if we violate the open meeting law? Any legal action that's taken in violation is nullified unless a quorum of the board ratifies it at a later, properly noticed meeting. The law does provide for a civil penalty of up to $500 per violation, and that's against the individual who violates the law. It is not a fine that the district would be able to pay. The Attorney General can prosecute and also order injunctive relief, equitable remedies such as training and that kind of thing. Also, if somebody brings a legal action regarding the open meeting law and prevails, the court can award attorney's fees in that case. Again, attorney's fees would be against any individual who violated. The more extreme penalty under the law is if a court were to determine that a particular public officer violated the open meeting law intentionally to deprive the public of this information, or an opportunity to be heard on the information, the court could remove a member from office. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
It's okay if you don't.
Board Member Kravitz? Just to confirm.
No, no questions.
No questions.
You're getting very good at this, Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Thank you.
See you next year. All right, excellent. Michelle.
All right. Well, there's no further comments. Thank you all again for your comments and your vote, do you deserve. Congratulations to Board Member Hartman as our vice president. Do you have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
What a quick one this first part of the year. Thank you, Board Member Kirby. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I made the motion, sorry. See, I screwed up the first one. All right, thank you, Board Member Beckham, for that second. Got that, Sondra? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you all. Stay healthy. Stay healthy.